Okay, good morning. I'm going to call to order the Washoe County Board of County Commissioners meeting for February 15th. It is 10:00 a.m. And we will start with a salute to the flag. Jen, would you lead us in a salute to the flag? Would you do that for us today? Would you honor us?
Thank you.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. Madam Clerk, floor call.
Chair Von Hartung.
Here.
Vice Chair Alexis Hill.
Here.
Bob Lucy.
Here.
Kitty Jung is absent. Jeanne Herman.
Here.
County Manager Eric Brown.
Here.
Chief Deputy District Attorney Mary Candares.
Here.
And I'm Jan Galasine, your county clerk. Sir, you have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Mr. Manager, would you take us into item number three?
Item three is a presentation by Jen Robinson, co-founder and youth intervention director for Awaken, a local faith-based nonprofit organization that provides awareness about human trafficking in Nevada.
Ms. Robinson, welcome. Thank you so much for leading us in the pledge this morning. Thanks for being here.
The honor of leading and to be able to speak with you today. I think it's so important for the community to be educated on the work that we're doing and more than that on even the advances and successes that we've seen that we actually get to celebrate together. And so, thank you guys for having us. At Awaken, we've been established in our community for 10 years now, 11th in May, and we work with anyone coming out of what's called commercial sexual exploitation, the legal and illegal forms of prostitution. Obviously, Nevada's really unique in that we're the only state that has legalized prostitution. And so, we have to actually look at some of the root causes to why are the rates of illegal prostitution higher than any other state? Creighton University actually did a study and found that Nevada was 63% higher than the next highest state, which was New York, for illegal prostitution. We were double that at California. And so, we have to look as a community, one, does legalization actually help the illegal rates? And what does the effect on our women and children? At Awaken, in the last 11 years, we worked with over 700 women and children. The last year, we've worked with 177. 64 of those were minors, under 18 years old, just little kids. Personally, the youngest girl that I've done an intake with in the last year has been 12 years old. Youngest has been 11 that I have personally worked with. And so, it's absolutely affecting our community. So, what are we doing about it at Awaken is we're actually two blocks away from here right now in the heart of where prostitution and trafficking takes place in our community. We have a drop-in center. And our drop-in center is completely survivor-run. So, when women and girls decide to maybe they want to make a change, but maybe they don't, maybe they just need a hot meal, maybe they need to know that hope and change is possible. And so, when they come into our drop-in center, they're met by women who have been where they are currently. And if they can start to see, hey, you can do it, maybe it's possible for my life too to make a change. And so, the drop-in center is just an amazing opportunity for them just to come and be themselves. Once they're ready to make a change, we have case managers that will come right alongside them. We understand the whole change process. And so, if you are in, say, contemplation, you don't even know pre-contemplation that you need to make a change, then we can't want that for you. And so, our case managers know how to listen to the words that the girls and the women are saying and to come right alongside them where they're actually at. So, we're not working harder, but we're supporting the change that they're actually willing to make. And so, changes could look like job readiness programs, going back to school. It could look like social development and training, mentorship. Maybe they want to intern someplace to kind of get a feel, get their kids back. Whatever change they want to make, we're there to come right alongside them. And then, at the teen level, we have an education center. And I know not many people can say, thanks to COVID, but, but thanks to COVID, it actually made it really easy for us to switch the online school setting. And so, we were constantly noticing that the girls that we would work with, they'd come back from being on the run, they would come back from out-of-state programs. And being thrown right back into their public education setting was not working. They were getting overwhelmed, they were running. And so, even before COVID happened, we were like, this isn't right, we need to be a fix. And so, we sat down with some of the girls that we were currently working with and said, hey, what does your ideal school setting look like? And we started to create that with them. And then, when school actually closed and went online, it was a perfect opportunity for us to open our education center, which is still running today. And so, girls are coming in and it's run by an educator. There's tutors coming in every week. If we don't know the specialty, like some of the math is sometimes too advanced for us even at the high school level, we have outside tutors coming in. They can go to the math center. And so, we're coming alongside them to actually get them to graduation. And then, mentorship and case management as well. And then, fun activities. The girls that we've worked with on average and the women as well, they've been in the life and on the streets for about eight years, sometimes a lot more. And so, they've lost their childhood. And so, we try to bring them back fun. Laughter is the best medicine, and so, we do a lot of laughter. We go to the trampoline park. Last week, it was Valentine's Day, or this week, but last week, we did a whole Galentine's Day party. And what I love is I was actually out of town for it, but when I got back into the office the next day, I had a little white, almost like a lunch bag, and they had decorated it with glitter and hearts. And everyone had done their own Valentines of notes of encouragement and things that they actually saw in not just me, but in each other. And so, I love just the camaraderie that we get to offer them. And so, it's, Awaken is a safe place, no matter where you're at in your healing process. We have a transitional house as well, and so, if you're actually ready to live in, it's six months to two years. So, whatever you need, we're going to either provide it if we can, or we know local resources. We're not trying to reinvent any of the wheels. And so, if it already exists in our community, we're here to help you get to the right resource for you. Can I also ask if you guys have any questions? Is that inappropriate?
No, it is absolutely appropriate. Thank you so much. You know, I, as you know, I'm highly supportive of your mission, what you guys do. I think you've done a great job. You're amazing.
Thank you.
That's all I can say is that you're amazing. Commissioners, do you have any questions for Ms. Robinson? Yes, Commissioner Hill.
Thank you so much for this presentation. I think it's great that the community who may not know about Awaken or learning about Awaken, as you know, this commission has been committed to getting folks housed and to reduce, go to zero for homelessness. And I was just curious, how can we support you in your efforts of housing these women? And are you having issues finding housing? And I just, I'd like to, you know, hear how we can connect you with the right resources.
Absolutely. Housing is the number-one barrier.
Okay.
And not just with our teens, but the adults as well. With our teens, if a teen is not part of social services right now, there's actually no housing for them. If I were to get a referral for a teen and she doesn't have housing, we would be scrounging to find her a place. With the adults, obviously, we have the shelter, we have like eddy houses for over 18 as well. And so, all across the board, there's a lack of housing.
There's a gap.
Yeah. Jessica can speak more about this. She's been writing grants for housing and what is the one you just applied to? The Continuum of Care Fund as well. It's a huge barrier. And so, if you look at Maslow's hierarchy of needs, if you do not have safety and shelter, you cannot move higher up the pyramid to get your other needs met. And so, it is the number-one need. And so, I would love any additional resources. I love what the tiny homes community are doing as well. We need more of that. We need more beds.
Great.
I would say too, our women do not always fit well with other populations. And so, we've noticed when a woman has been trafficked and she enters into a domestic violence shelter, it usually is not a good fit for her because her needs are so unique that it's just different. The abuse is different as well. And so, they oftentimes can't even relate population to population.
Okay. Well, hopefully, Mr. Manager, we can get Awaken connected with our Human Services Agency and our homeless population department. So, thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you.
Let me turn that back on. Commissioner Lucy, I have you signed in next.
Thank you. Jen, thank you so much. It's always a pleasure to hear and see what Awaken is doing. I can't speak. I got, you have done volumes, I mean, really volumes for our community. And when you talk about the challenges that these individuals experience from the mental abuse, the physical abuse, the challenges physically, the challenges fiscally, it really, they really need that support system. And, you know, the vice chair brought up a good point in regards to the mental health, you know, aspect of it. How, do you, do you have on-staff individuals? Do you sub that out to people? How do you address, you know, a lot of these? Because you say, I mean, you try to bring these women back into a safe, secure environment, but some of them are, you know, which we've experienced at Human Services, service-resistant. Because not because they don't want to be helped, they're just scared of being helped. They don't know because they just have never had that stability within their life. So, can you talk to me a little bit about that?
Yeah. Change is scary regardless of if it's a healthy change or negative change. And many times, we'll notice that the girls and the women will stay in their unhealthy situation because they know what to expect, they know the abuse. And they don't know what's on the other side of it. And so, the healing journey is really hard. It is why the recidivism rate is also high. And so, providing not just traditional therapy, but non-traditional, I can't make you want to get healthy, I can't make you want to change, I can't make you go to a therapist. I can tell you, you need to, but if you're not ready for it, you're not even going to participate in your own healing. And so, I have to meet the woman or the child where they're at. But we also provide different types of therapy. And so, there's equine therapy, we do a ton of art and healing therapy, even adventure therapy, that's my favorite thing that we do with the teens. And if you think about, like, if we were all in a traumatic experience together, we would bond, right? We would have this shared experience. And so, essentially, we're recreating fear in what I believe traffickers use, and they know how to manipulate and how those bonding chemicals in your mind and your body work. And we're trying to do it the opposite. So, if we go rock climbing, if we go rappelling, if we go tubing on Tahoe, we're kind of recreating exciting opportunities where teens' brains are firing together, and so, they're going to wire together, right? And so, if we get them to wire with healthy individuals, and then we bring a therapist along with us as well to then help them process and to come down from that highly emotional state or intense state, and we can bring them down, right? And so, we got to meet them where they're at. You know, we do the swing at the GSR. So, we meet them at those heightened states, and then we help bring them down through the more traditional and less traditional forms of therapy, like the arts, meditation, yoga. They hate yoga. And our teens, we'll have them do yoga in the education center at least once a month. They don't want to be present with their bodies. They don't want to feel. They want to disassociate. And so, if we can actually start to get them connected to their actual physical bodies, it is healing. We work with a ton of therapists as well. We have two therapists on staff as well as one therapist that is on staff just to care for our staff. Because if our staff isn't healthy, we can't then work well with the women and the girls. And so, they do trigger our own backgrounds and our childhood and our trauma. And so, if we're acting out of that, we're not being the best that we can for them. And so, we do have a therapist just for our staff. And then, we have a number of therapists that work with our case managers and the clients as well. And so, that's an extremely important part.
Wonderful. And Jen, another question too. You know, obviously, when we talk about human trafficking and the challenges that are experienced through that, you talk about it on a local level. This is, this is a federal and state issue. And, you know, so, the Department of Justice, they, you know, or the Office of Victims of Crime, which, you know, they created, you know, VOCA Victims of Crime advocacy, you know, there's all kinds of, you spoke about grant monies, you know, and I know you guys do, you had a wonderful fundraiser this last weekend that, you know, from a local group that provided lots of support for Awaken. And you do a lot of fundraising, but have you guys experienced challenges with procuring grant dollars from the, at the federal level? I mean, I was in Winemucca and staying at a hotel in Winemucca, and there's a sticker on the window in the bathroom, like, for informing women if they've been trafficked, how to get ahold and, you know, who to talk to and different things like that. And there's a lot of information at RTC, we've got it on buses. You know, so what, how can we maybe help or help you procure federal dollars? Are you doing, is that something that you guys are approaching or where's that, how's your funding going?
Our funding is, thankfully, we've been really, really blessed and really lucky. We originally, we kept hearing, like, don't apply for federal dollars, they want to control, they, you know. And so, originally, we were approached by VAWA, Violence Against Women. They said, we want to fund what you're doing. And we're like, oh, no, 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 like, we don't want you to dictate what our outcomes and success looks like. And they came back, no, we actually want to support the work that you're doing. And so, in 20, I believe it was January 2014, maybe even 13, we first started receiving Violence Against Women funds. And then, in 2015, we started to receive VOCA funds. And VOCA has been a huge supporter of our case managers and our drop-in center. And then, when we opened the transitional house, we applied for our first federal fund through OBC. And so, thankfully, we've been really lucky. I know Jessica continues to apply for grants. We've recently applied for three additional grants for more outreach and some housing opportunities as well that we have not received, but we're going to continue to keep going after those dollars. Then, just the community support, it's incredible. We had a fundraiser that, just a group of mamas through on Saturday. It was called Mamas for a Cause. And the moms just wanted to get together and do something for the community, and it raised over $60,000. It was incredible. And so, our community is amazing. That is one thing I will say. That Ron Chalmers, he was head of the street enforcement team when I first started, and he said Reno's actually a community that is small enough that we can make a difference and that we will see change in our community. And that is constantly what I've seen over the last 10, 11 years, is our community stepping up. They are extremely generous in donating, whether it's individuals or businesses, churches. The community wants to get involved in this, and we've been incredibly grateful and lucky for their support. But we're always going after those dollars. So, if you hear of opportunities, just because you're a girl.
Yeah, okay. Well, I know the Department of Justice has got some new programs out that directly are approached through for mental health, through the ARPA funds that are, that are going to be federally allocated through the Treasury and the Department of Justice. So, those, that type of funding is something you want to look at and Health and Human Services, you know, especially as it pertains to mental health and those types of programming. Big, those are big grants with lots of money in those grants. And so, if you haven't reached out to the Senator's staff, both Senator Masto's staff and Senator Rosen's staff, they can help you with identifying. And there's the new community grants, you know, that are the community project grants that, you know, are earmarking about $4 million for programming and different things like that. So, those are available. So, I would look forward to that. So, thank you for coming today. Thank you, Chairman.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Herman, I have you signed in next.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I am just so pleased to get to meet you this way, and I, I think I can be of help to you. And I was wondering if this is the right number that's on the flyer? Can I get ahold of you at that number?
You can, yes. It's the 393.
Yeah.
Number, yes, absolutely.
Okay.
I can also leave my own personal cellphone that you can call.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay. Anyone else? I will just say that this is one of the many services, but a very important one, and we're grateful for the assistance that you give, not only Washoe County, but of course, the residents of Washoe County. I don't think people realize that this even exists in our community, most people don't, they just don't know.
Yeah.
You know, you just, you just don't know. And so, thank you. It's, it's obviously a passion for you guys. And, and so, I know you've got a great team, and certainly let us know how we can assist you in your mission.
Absolutely. Thank you so much for this opportunity and for having us. We really appreciate it.
Our pleasure. Thank you.
Nice to see you.
Okay. Mr. Manager, that takes us now to item number four.
Item number four is a presentation by Nick Johnson, Project Manager Chief for NDOT regarding NDOT's Sustainable Funding Sources for Roads and how Washoe County will fund road construction and maintenance as the fleet transitions away from fossil fuels.
Mr. Johnson, welcome. I will, I will say that I know Commissioner Lucy and I have already seen this presentation. We saw it at RTC. But I'm glad you're here to give it to the commission because I think it's, I think it's important. So, the floor is yours.
All right. Well, thank you, Chairman, and good morning, everyone. For the record, Nick Johnson with NDOT. And I just want to say first, say thanks for having me here this morning to go through an ongoing study right now that's being conducted by a working group directed through AB 413 from the last legislative session. So, it's not an NDOT study, but a study being conducted by an advisory working group. And I'll talk a little bit more about it later, but NDOT was directed to facilitate the process. And so, this morning, I'll go through what the group is looking at, what they're considering, and kind of next steps as we lead into the 2023 legislative session. So, first, I'm going to talk a little bit about the data, the statistics that kind of frame the challenge and need with our transportation infrastructure. And then, get into the actual bill, the advisory working group, and then what we're, what the group is looking at and how we're measuring those, and then some of those next steps. So, just to kind of start with some of that background data, there's a bunch of different statistics up here. And I think here in Washoe County, we all are very well aware, that top one there on the left, the population growth, it's more than doubled since 2010. But I think the one graphic here that's most telling is in the bottom middle there, that blue one about vehicles, miles traveled. That has more than tripled since 2010 and even exceeds our population growth. And then, when you couple that with the rise in construction costs, you know, with inflation, material shortages, you know, things like that that we're experiencing now, it's making it harder and harder not only to preserve our existing infrastructure, but even construct the new. And so, when we look at how do we fund our projects, you know, with the state highway fund, the primary source is fuel taxes. They go in there also with, you know, taxes on, you know, vehicles and drivers from the DMV. And even at the local level, that's a big part of the, you know, the source of revenue is fuel tax. And with, you know, vehicles becoming more and more fuel-efficient as well as electric vehicles, more of those on our roadways, the amount of money going, or the fuel tax going into the highway fund is slowly decreasing. And so, what you see here in that red is, you know, the amount of fuel tax going to the state highway fund. And then, in green is that vehicle miles traveled. So, the vehicle miles traveled on our, on our state and local roadways is outpacing the amount of fuel tax that we have to go to fund those, you know, transportation infrastructure. And just another statistic here, when we look at the amount of fuel tax that a, that a user is paid, you know, per mile driven, back in 2010, the average user was paying about, I don't know, 1.27 cents per every mile driven. Now, we fast forward to 2020, and they're paying about 1.03 cents of fuel tax per mile driven. So, it's about a 20% decrease over 10 years, and it's continuing to follow that path. And so, that information kind of frames that challenge and that need as we look at funding and all the needs that we have across the state, even at our local, you know, on our local streets to try to maintain our infrastructure and, and create the new infrastructure that we need. So, during, actually taking a step back to the 2019 legislative session, a Senate concurrent resolution was passed to have a smaller group look at transportation funding and electric vehicles and how one impacts the other. Well, as a result of that, the recommendation came forward in the 2021 legislature to do an in-depth study that analyzed this. So, looked at, looked at what are sustainable sources for the future to ensure that we can maintain our infrastructure and have funding to create the new infrastructure that we need. And so, AB 413 was passed, and they're directed, NDOT, to help facilitate this larger group, we call the Advisory Working Group, to convene, to study this, and to come up with a recommendation for the legislature in 2023. So, we're, we've been engaged in, in bringing this group together, facilitating the process, meeting, the study, but it's really the Advisory Working Group that's deliberating and will be providing that recommendation. So, just what you see up here is kind of the mission statement developed by that Advisory Working Group. And part of that bill, you know, in the first paragraph here, you know, directed us, hey, bring this group together, look at these things, but it also wanted the group to look at two recent studies that have been conducted, and actually, one that was passed in Utah, it was the Utah Ruck Program or the Road User Charge Program, which essentially taxed electric vehicles. And then, the, I'll see if I get this right, the Natural Resource Defense Council did a study on tax on miles per gallon. And so, the group looked at that with many other, you know, legislation that had passed or studies that had been done by other states, you know, as part of, you know, this study. And then, the second paragraph there is, is kind of the mission statement. And all the blue text up here is text that was taken from the bill itself. So, the goal is, you know, really to look at funding for all transportation, multimodern, all users, take into account, you know, different equities of those users as well as reducing greenhouse gas. And then, finally, the Advisory Working Group is also going to look at, how does land use play a role in this? Not necessarily make any recommendations for any changes on policy or things like that, but how does it play a role in our infrastructure, which ultimately leads to the funding that we need to maintain that infrastructure? So, a little bit about the Advisory Working Group, there's 29 members, and the bullet points that you see up here came out of AB 413. So, they wanted a very diverse group of membership, you know, as part of this team and this group to come up with these recommendations. So, as you can see, we have, you know, everything from, you know, local, state, you know, NPO agencies sitting at the table talking about this, but also energy, environmental, you know, diverse minority groups, other businesses, all of which that have vested interest in the transportation infrastructure here in the state. Now, at the end of this, I'll have a link to the website. So, if you're interested in who those members are, the whole roster's there on the website. And this kind of shows the overall meeting schedule for this group. We've been, for the most part, the group has been meeting almost on a monthly basis where we've skipped a few months here or there, but there's a lot of work for this group to do in one year. You know, and the goal was, is immediately when the session ended there in July, we brought the group together, they started organizing, setting goals, looking at the challenges and the studies with the goal that probably mid-this year, that group can convene and come up with some preliminary and final recommendations that we can then document in a report to give to the legislature by the end of the year for the upcoming session. Okay. So, a little bit about what the group is getting into now. So, one of the first things we did is say, hey, when we look at these funding mechanisms or different ways to generate the revenue for infrastructure, what are the outcomes? What are the goals of each of those funding mechanisms? So, the, the group developed these revenue-guiding principles. And so, every mechanism or package of mechanisms that they look at, they kind of measure it back to these goals and say, how does it meet these goals? And is it, you know, meeting or, you know, going above or meeting what we want as an outcome of, you know, our funding mechanisms or for the recommendation? And I'm not going to read all of them, but here are kind of those guiding principles or those goals that the group has established. And you can see, you can see there's a number of them looking at, you know, sustainability. You know, can it be sustainable in the future with changes in vehicle types, miles per gallon, different transportation systems? Is it enough sufficiency? Will it meet the needs that, you know, not only for today, but in the future as well? Equity, flexibility, you know, can it be used for all programs, projects that are transportation-related to meet those needs? Greenhouse gas emissions, working towards reducing that? And then, finally, transparency and efficiency. Does the taxpayer know where, you know, how much and where it goes and how it's being used? And then, the cost of administration and ease of compliance? You know, because that can be spendy too. If you introduce new mechanisms, you know, do you, you know, what is the cost to administer that mechanism? So, they're trying to take all of these different things into consideration when they look at them. And so, the last month in January, this was presented. And this up here is kind of a comprehensive list of ideas and options, you know, that could be used to generate different, you know, fundings or amount of funding, you know, for now or in the future. And the goal last month was to kind of deliberate and whittle this list down. And unfortunately, we didn't get it down too far. I think we only eliminated one, and I think it was the payroll tax there, but that was about the only one that came off the table. So, there's still some work to do by the group. But as you can see, this group is looking at all options. They're looking at whatever we can do and different, and as we get into the next month's meeting, looking at different packages. How can these be put together that maybe one, one mechanism isn't going to solve all the problems, but maybe a combination of all of them? the problems, but maybe a combination of all of them? And, you know, how does those work? They might transition from being able to meet a short-term need and then transitioning into something different for a long-term need. So our next steps, and this is kind of the back half of that schedule that I showed a little bit earlier, but it's really, we're kind of in the midst of, you know, running the analysis on different mechanisms, how do they work? You know, looking at different packages and then the goal is for that group to deliberate, you know, hopefully build consensus around a couple of recommendations, right-size those, and then later this year, document those recommendations in a final report that we can get back to the legislature. So here are the the links to the site. And I will mention that every time this group convenes, I think it's the second Tuesday of every month, they're public meetings, so that, you know, folks could show up, provide public comment. They're also streamed live on NDOT's YouTube channel, so if anybody's interested in listening in, those are available. And like I said, all the information that has been provided in the previous meetings are all on the site, as well as rosters or anything else that you're looking for. And if you have questions, you can always, you have the email here or you can reach out to myself or Director Swallow. And that's it. So I will open it up for any questions.
Thank you so much. So I'm, let me just ask a question first, because I think maybe this will, this will be important. In Washoe County, you know, we have RTC 5, which was a voter-approved gas tax, and then we have a voter-approved indexing measure on that gas tax. And then, of course, we have RIF, which is the Regional Road Impact Fee that's paid by every user in the system. And then, and those, those users are based on, you know, McDonald's pays a higher rate than, say, a residential dwelling unit. But how does Clark County pay for its infrastructure? Does it, does it have a gas tax? Does it have an RTC 5? What is it? How is it, how is it funding itself?
They had a similar, in, in, from what I know, a similar initiative, I believe in, I think it was 2019, I could be wrong on that, but FRI, the, so they index the gas tax down there. And so they, you know, in addition to, you know, similar to Washoe NPO with other, you know, federal funds that get passed through too. So they as well have a very similar type package that they went through.
Okay. I mean, I have a bunch of comments coming, but I mean, as you, as you know, Nick, we've had this conversation, I'm very frustrated with the level of spending in Washoe County. I mean, it's, it's, in my opinion, it's disproportionate. And so, you know, and and we, the county residents, not Washoe County itself, but but we, the residents through RTC have had to fund many of the things, even on NDOT right-of-ways. And so I'm, I'm, I'm frustrated. I'll, I'll point a bunch of these things out here in just a minute of of places where I think that we've got, I just, I don't know how the working group is going to to do this, but I will, I will say that once they come up with a measure, once they come up with a, a decision of these are all the things that we're going to do, hoping they'll take it to the voters.
Ultimately, as I mentioned, what it is, a recommendation to the legislature. So depending on what it is, it most certainly could be something that would have to pass through a vote. It may not, but that's, you know, ultimately, it's a recommendation, right? It's, this is a study to look at it, what can we do? Here's our thoughts, you know, and then take it to the legislature.
I'm not trying to shoot you, I know that you're
I know, I know.
You know, we've, we've dealt with one another for a long time and I appreciate you being here. Vice Chair Hill, I have you sign in first.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for this presentation. I also have seen it through the Tahoe Transportation District. Sandra Rosenberg gave this presentation and I'm really excited about the comprehensive way that you're going about looking at these funding sources. And you were talking about flexibility and I know that there's some issues with the state highway fund being used for public transportation. Is there going to be any, my understanding is it's just allowed to be used for road infrastructure? Is there going to be flexibility built into future changes to the constitution on something like that? Has the the committee discussed that?
I don't think they've gotten that far along yet. But I think the goal is, you know, as I mentioned, is that it can be flexible to, you know, different modes or users or things like that. It's just kind, I think it will depend on what it is that recommendation is and what type of changes or, as, as you mentioned, Mr. Hartung, you know, if there's votes or things like that that, you know, need to be passed. So there's still a lot up in the air, but I think they're trying to take into account many of those things.
Okay. I know for Tahoe, we're looking at a regional revenue source. It's, I'm sure you know that. So we're all competing kind of for the same dollars or different dollars. And so I'm glad that we're coordinating, my understanding is that we're coordinating very closely with NDOT on that and looking forward to, you know, working with you on how we can ensure that we get people, you know, to point A to point B by, well, you know, conserving energy, saving the environment and also getting them in there, there in a safe way. So thank you for the presentation.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Commissioner Herman, I have you signed in next.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would ask a question. Well, first I'd say I am excited about this money that might come to fruition. I have all, my district is quite large, has long roads that go into other states. Oops, sorry. And I talk with my hands, I'm hard Italian, so I, I'm hoping very, you know, very much that the roads in District 5 in the north will see an improvement. It would make those folks that live up there very happy because if there are some roads up there, they'll swallow a pickup up. So it's been kind of skillful neglect. I, I know that, that the money only goes so far. You gotta do more where the population is, I understand that. But it's time and I'm glad to hear you speak and let us know that there's hope. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Commissioner Lucy, I have you sign in.
Thank you, Chairman. Nick, it's always great to see you. Thanks for coming in this morning. Do appreciate all the work that you're doing down with NDOT. You know, and I, I want to, I want to tag on to both the chairman's conversation, well, all the commissioners' conversations, you know. Clark County is very different in the sense that it's very much an urban county, right? And then the other 15 counties are very much rural counties. They don't have a, but Washoe County is very unique in the sense that we have a very large demographic of urban core for, that represents about 136 square miles of our community. Then the remainder of that is rural for a good portion of that. And, you know, RTC does a really good job within the community, supporting our connectors and some of our tierials in conjunction and help with, and data, you know, NDOT plays a major role here as well. But, you know, when you travel outside of, of I-80 or 395 or 50 for that matter, or I-95, you see that there are roads in other parts of the, the state that are just in disrepair. And we talk, and constantly, there's just these two conversations going on. We know there's money that needs to be spent, we know there's improvements that need to be made, safeties are number one priority. But then we shift back when, when the bill comes due and the project's ready, instead of, instead of planning these projects and just finding the money to do it and putting it all in the pot and going together and just saying, hey, look, we have this responsibility, NDOT or whoever it is, and then, you know, I, not you, but I mean, I know that the Board of Directors and individuals and that board changes subsequently all the time, that it's all proportionate. Well, Clark County generates all the sales tax. Clark County has 80% of the money that, you know, and then the rest of you. So, you know, when we have those types of conversations, it leaves the other counties, the other 16 of us to kind of fend for ourselves. And luckily, Washoe County has an RTC and we have two cities that can help us fund a lot of this movement. We've got tourism and we're very lucky to be on the California border in that sense for tourism and travel and bringing people in. But counties like Eureka, counties like Mineral County, Lincoln, that don't have those types of, those, you know, are set, are challenged, you know? They've got roads with giant cracks in them, you know? And, and we don't talk about those types of issues. And it's, so it's, it is nice to hear that we're working in that, but to me, it's almost a, a, you know, a dollar short and a day late in regards to where we need to really address this stuff. You know, when you drive up to Gerlach, one of the largest, you know, prior to the pandemic, but one of the largest economic drivers within our community was Burnham. You know, Gerlach benefit from it, Washoe County benefited from it, Fernley, everybody along the 80 corridor for individuals, the airports, Las Vegas, lots of people benefited from this event. However, that road, which is a state road, we're having to go up and, you know, contract with you and, and figure things out and it, and it's just, it's never, there's never a substantial enough amount of money because there's other, always other bigger projects that we need to address, right? And so I know the state has shortcomings, I know that we all fall and find ourselves in the challenge of playing catch-up, but we really need to have these more sustainable discussions about where we spend those dollars adequately to sustain all of, every Nevada, not just the ones that supposedly are paying for everything. Because to say that, you know, it doesn't make sense. Vegas has millions of people that travel through there that, that add to their sales tax where none of us other can benefit from. So it's, it's not apples to apples, it's kind of, we just kind of make it up as we go. So those are my comments. Hopefully, we can still continue to figure something out, but that's where we're going. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Commissioner. And I'll, and I'll just add this as a final. So when we, when you look on your slide 16, Nick, it's, it's, some of these things scare me a little bit because there's a lot of crossover. So in other words, you know, my vehicle needs tires. So if you, if you tax me on tires and you tax me on gas, it's, I'm, I'm getting duly taxed. And, and the problem is, is that, is that the way that some of this is set up is, is it could be disproportionate in terms of someone's ability to pay. So as an example, if you, if you add a, an increased basic license fee, you know, so now instead of it costing me, you know, $500 or $600 a year, now it costs me $3,000 a year. That's a chunk that I've got to come out with, along with insurance and all of these other things. And it's, and it's very, it could be disproportionate for some, for many folks, as a matter of fact, not just some, for many. I, I, I concern myself with that because I would, I would be paying fuel tax on my two vehicles, because I don't own an EV. And then I would be on the hook for increased license fees. So where an EV, I don't know how you would add a tax on EV electricity consumed. How would you do that? I mean, it was, it's hypothetical question. So it, it really bothers me because, because there is no, there is no sound way to sort of deal with this unless we say, okay, look, we're going to throw out the gas tax completely. And what we do is, and, and again, though, this is, this is the problem, because it turns into a single chunk of money. When I pay, when I go and fill my tank up with gas, you know, I pay whatever the tax is on top of, of my fuel. So I'm paying it a little bit at a time. And I don't have to come up with that money all in, in, you know, at one time. So those are the, those are the things that concern me. I, I totally agree with, with Commissioner Lucy. We've got to figure out a better way. We have huge need in this region and, and it has not been addressed in many years. I mean, many, many years. And you and I, I think, have had this conversation, Pyramid Highway. It hasn't been addressed in 30 years, the capacity needs. It's, it's very distressing, even 395 north. We did do some capacity improvements going north, but going south, I mean, I've lived here since 1980, nothing's been done since, since 1980. So we've, you know, I'm, I'm supportive of this, but I'm hopeful that you guys will, your working group will come back to the voters, not just the legislature, and let the legislature make decisions because we are very familiar with how those turn out. So I'll just leave it at that. Anyone else? Okay? I appreciate your time. Thank you so much for coming out. Tough work, it's, this is not easy stuff. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Manager.
Item five is an appearance and presentation by Dwayne Smith, Engineering and Capital Projects Division Director for Washoe County Community Services Department, to provide an update regarding the response to the 2017 North Valleys flooding.
Mr. Smith, welcome.
Good morning, Chair. Good morning, Vice Chair, Board and Mr. Manager. We'll be coming to you with more regular updates on different components that we address for the community through the Community Services Department, but today's update is certainly on the North Valley flooding issues. So there's been a significant amount of work that's occurred since our last update and I wanted to update you on what we've been doing and what we're moving forward with. Excuse me. So just wanted to reaffirm the directives that were provided from you, the board, to staff in 2017. And through these directives, we've used this to shape our initial and our current responses to the 2017 flood events. And I'm, I'm going to focus mostly within the Lemon Valley area, but we, of course, know that there were other impacted areas and we still apply these same directives. So today I wanted to go over the Residential Purchase Program, the work that we've been doing recently on the barrier removals, again, specific to Lemon Valley, reaffirm some of the pieces associated with the FEMA floodplain and focus on our long-term mitigation strategies. So to start, we see the current water surface elevation of Swan Lake is about 4918. This represents about 2,800 acre feet of water or over 900 million gallons of water in the lake. At the high, it was well over 9,000 acre feet of water in Swan Lake, well over 3 billion gallons of water. So what we see today is about one-third of the, of the water in the lake from the high point. And so you can see also that stair-step progression down as we continue to see dry weather and drought impacts. We knew that the, that the lake would be ultimately coming back down in elevation. Our flood response in the North Valleys is, has been about $11.6 million. This includes some money from the utility to protect the Lemon Valley Wastewater Treatment Plant, but the majority of this has been to affect the protections and follow those, those guiding principles for the benefit of the residents in the area. The Residential Purchase Program, we started this in an application through the state to FEMA in 2018. And since that time, there was a lot of changes, predominantly impacts from the lawsuit between the residents and the city of Reno. Ultimately, we had to reduce the number of homes purchased through this first phase down to four. We've successfully purchased three of those properties, that fourth will close escrow on March 1st. All the cleaning, the home removals, the structure removals, debris removal, utility tiebacks, all of those pieces will occur through this year and we anticipate closing out the grant by the end of this year. This has been a good program and we do recognize the value and will move forward looking for additional opportunities for funding to purchase more of these impacted properties. This is just a quick map to show you where those four properties are. So we've purchased the number one and number two and number three. These are on the north and primarily on the west side of the Swan Lake area. As anticipated, once the water levels began dropping to safe levels, we began removing barrier systems as appropriate. We started over on Arkansas back in 2019, so as we saw the flood levels reduce, we were able to go over and remove those barrier systems and rebuild that roadway. We've also removed the barriers around the Lemon Valley School and restored the condition along the fence line and some of their property. We left it better than what we found it. That was done in the fall of last year prior to school starting. So we're, we're currently removing all of the remaining temporary barriers around the lake. This involves the HESCO barriers, the Tiger dams, the Berms, all the pumps, those pieces. We do, we still have more work to do. So if you're, heard anything from residents out there or from others out there, I think you've heard that we've done quite a bit. The barriers are down off of Lemon Drive, we've restored ditch conditions, we've removed the culvert plugs under Lemon Drive. We still have some more work to do up around the Pompe area. And of course, it won't be all completed until we've cleaned up and left again the, the area better than what we found it. We look forward to substantial completion at the end of April of this year. A couple of key points, as you know, those, the temporary barriers, and I'm speaking specifically the HESCO barriers, provided that level of protection. We know that, that in the future, there's other mitigation strategies, but HESCO barriers will play a role most likely. So we have kept the majority of the material that was placed in those HESCO barriers. So that is being stockpiled and stored at our Silver Knolls Pit and it's available for us into the future. This is just a few pictures. That top picture is along Lemon Drive, so you can see that the barriers have been removed, shoulders being restored. We still have some work to do along the roadside ditches. Lemon Drive is a City of Reno roadway, so we've collaborated with the City of Reno. They've been involved in the processes to make sure that their, their expectation is confirmed for roadside ditch, the way we leave the roadside ditches. As I reported to you previously, the FEMA floodplain, the 100-year floodplain was shown to have inaccuracies during the flood event in 2017. As administrators of FEMA and following our requirements to condition both new development and certainly as we apply the FEMA requirements under the CRS and certainly as we apply the FEMA requirements under the CRS program, we've been working on updating the FEMA-designated floodplain, the 1% floodplain within the Swan Lake area. That work is, is being done because we do need to provide the best and current information regarding flood risks, both to our community members, businesses, and residences. Those studies and analysis now can be finalized. The DRI study that was being done was completed and submitted in January of this year, so last month. With that, now we can conform our data sets so that we can move forward and complete that final, final FEMA floodplain analysis. I just wanted to mention that we recognize the importance of accurately providing flood risk information to our community. And so that has been our focus. Our other focus, as we know, will be that there will be additional folks that are impacted as the floodplain level changes. We are committed to working with our community, working with the FEMA grandfathering processes, to help the community as we move through this. We anticipate this process, now that we have the, again, the DRI report and we can complete this, we anticipate it's going to take about 12 to 18 months to go through this FEMA update, working with our community partners to make sure that we've addressed those issues and concerns. This is just a map. This is not the map. I don't want anybody to look at this and say, my house is in this. But this does represent what we anticipate to be some of the change to the floodplain. So you can see the orange areas are those new, new floodplain areas. We've made good progress on the long-term mitigation effects to reduce the flood risk for residents and to protect our critical infrastructure. These current efforts include conditioning new development. We do have updated policies, both from you and from the City Council, regarding volumetric mitigation for material within FEMA-designated floodplains and retention and detention basin volumetric mitigation work. As you probably recall, back in 2018, there was a matrix. I refer to it as the matrix that was developed. And that matrix had multiple items to investigate that would bring benefit to the overall flood conditions within the, within the Swan Lake area. Over time, we've gone through, working with area experts, to reduce that matrix down to about five alternatives. Those alternatives are to purchase residential properties, upstream diversions. So basically to divert floodwater, runoff as it comes down off of Peavine, the primary source, and divert it before it reaches the Swan Lake area. Berms and levees within the actual basin to protect residents. Retention basins located in areas outside of the Swan Lake proper to help capture some of those volumes. And also how we might pump out water, storm and floodwater from the Swan Lake area. We've further completed Phase One engineering analyses for the upstream diversions, for the retention basins, and also for the pumping out options. So this, this all comes together when we start thinking about the, the process of developing the Swan Lake operation or management plan. You've probably heard this term used before. And really what our goal is, to protect our residents and to protect critical infrastructure during flood times, we need the ability to divert water either from entering the basin initially or to remove that water from the basin. But we also have to remember that under most circumstances, that is a, almost a dry lake bed. And so we have to also anticipate this, these conditions and make sure that we're also putting water in for the benefit of the habitat, the wildlife, and to enhance the quality of life. We do have a park in the area as well. So these policies, these, the matrix, are all focused on the Swan Lake operation plan. As with any thoughtful solution, and certainly when we're considering these complex challenges, it involves many stakeholders. So we've been working very closely with the stakeholder group. For in, for instance, we've been working with the City of Reno on the Swan Lake operation or management plan. We've met even just last week, again, to go through some of these next steps. We've also been working very closely with the RTC, the Regional Transportation Commission. They have a project to raise and realign portions of Lemon Drive. This is in alignment with the policies that you set forth initially, which is to provide safe access to the residents and to allow for emergency responders to, to be able to come into the area during these, these flood events. This project that RTC is leading and supported by Washoe County and the City of Reno addresses just that, that policy. So we're working very closely with them to come up with the best solution and bring that ultimately back to all of you. So we continue to work and identify other opportunities. I did mention, or placed on here, the Lemon Valley Water Reclamation Facility. I know there was a lot of concerns about that facility during the flooding, both from the public and also from, from us, from your staff. So we do have some reports completed for that, and we're looking forward to a process by which we move the flows from the Lemon Valley Plant to the City of Reno Sted Plant, purchase that appropriate capacity, and raz, ultimately raz the Lemon Valley Plant. There's multiple reasons for that, but I think we can all recognize the benefits of moving forward with those pieces as well. So all of this effort is to help reduce risk for existing residents, reduce risk for our critical infrastructure, and to help reduce future costs as we address these, these flood issues. So we're going to continue to bring projects to you for your consideration as we move forward. So I just wanted to say thank you. Again, I wanted to provide you a brief update on what your staff has been working on within the Lemon Valley area as we continue to, to move forward with the community and with the, with our responses to help mitigate these, both these issues currently and as we move into the future. And be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Okay, thank you. I, I have quite a number of comments, but I'm going to let Commissioner Herman chime in first. This is her district.
Thank you, sir. First, at the beginning of what I'm going to say and ask, I just wanted to bring a little history to the HESCO barriers, barriers and how we got them. In 2017, I went to a legislative conference, NACO Legislative Conference in DC. And so John Slaughter was there, and our assistant manager was there at that time. And I, the flood had just taken place, and I was so concerned about it that, since I had a captive audience, I had the, you know, everybody there, and I was the only commissioner at that particular one that I knew about. I took advantage of it. I start, and you're lucky, because I haven't done that to you yet, but anyhow. So, so I started nagging at John and, and nagged and nagged and nagged that we had to do something about Lemon Valley. Well, I said, I was, I was relentless. I mean, I was really pushy, and I'm not usually that way, but. And I had some cheerleading help from the Assistant County Manager, who was standing behind John most of the times that I would be bothering John about this issue. So I, he would stand behind John and go, thumbs up, and, and nod his head, yes, 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 you know? And so I kept after and kept after. And finally, finally, he agreed, after all this terrorism, that he would take me to our lobbyist at the time that we had then, and congressman, who immediately went to work on getting help. And very soon, we had FEMA and the Corps of Engineers here. And the HESCO barriers became a reality. So that's why I resisted taking them down, because it was just kind of sentimental to me and, and a lot of the people in Lemon Valley. That protection there felt good. So now they're down, and it's kind of sad, but I know it had to happen. And I know that it took a lot of little Dutch boys to keep plugging the dam. And I thank all of those that were involved in that. And now the questions are about the Lemon Valley situation and the, the remains of the, the remains. They were wondering, when are we going to discard the piles of refuse that's left over there? So that's a burning question in a lot of people's minds. And I think that's all I had to say about that. Thank you, except for the question about, would it be possible to divert Silver Lake's drainage into Swan Lake and eliminate that problem? Is there a way to divert that? I mean, it just seems like that should be used somewhere or, rather than just running indiscriminately into the Swan Lake Basin. And as far as, do you really feel that, that you're going to buy out a great number of homes? Because it looks like it on your one map that it's, there's a lot of edge on the lake that's supposedly in the flood zone. Is that going to be protected in some way? Or are we going to have more floods now that the barrier's down? I'm sorry to give you so many questions, but there you are. I'll quit.
No, maybe I can address through the chair a couple of your questions there, and happy, happy to. I would just start by saying that, yes, we've heard some of the residents reach out regarding the debris that's still in place as part of our construction project. That will all be removed and cleaned up. That's what I was indicating, that by the end of the following month, we expect to have substantial completion, and that will certainly be part of that. So I just want to reassure the community that we will leave the area better than what we found it. Your comment regarding Silver into Swan, I would just say this. It's a comprehensive and complicated solution to help mitigate future flood issues. We don't know when those floods are going to occur. We don't know if it's going to be next year or 50 years from now. Our obligation of the community is to develop those strategies, though, by which we can help mitigate those pieces. So when we look at the interrelationship between Silver and Swan Lake, yes, we're looking at the floodplain elevations. We're looking at, you know, potentially what is that interaction? And that will help us make the better and best recommendations for how we properly mitigate these potential future impacts. Regarding the home purchase program, we do believe that there is a place for future home purchase. From the experiences that we've had through 2017, a lot of those areas are probably more on the west side of the lake, over in the Pompey area. The other mitigation strategies that we're working on are being done to help protect the entire lake. So there won't be one certain solution. For instance, it won't be just to go purchase homes, but it's going to be part of the overall comprehensive solution. So those areas that are in the north, the solutions for those might be a combination of lowering the lake levels through pumping, barrier systems, might be some selective or specific home purchases, and it might be other pieces as, as well. So I look forward to continuing to give you updates as we move forward on these comprehensive and collaborative solutions with the city, with RTC, and with our other partners out there. I hope that answers some of your questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Vice Chair Hill, I have you signed in next.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I think this is a great update to understand where we stand today. And it looks like you do have to play with a lot of folks in this arena. I know when I took a tour of this area with Commissioner Herman, I learned a lot about, you know, wow, there's so many overlapping barriers or boundary lines between the City of Reno, Washoe County. And so I know that's tough, and I, I'm excited about the Lemon Drive RTC roadway project. And I'm wondering if any of these FEMA grants allow for also beautification in the area? You know, like, I love what you said, if we're going to leave it better than how we found it? And is there any investments that, you know, we can support and make in that area for, you know, public safety investments, you know, pedestrian improvements? Any of those kind of things to just ensure that that area just continues to be very vibrant area in the, in the community?
And through the chair to the vice chair, I had two great comments, and I appreciate that, that, that direction. First of all, the RTC project does include walking paths and other amenities for the community in the area. Those details haven't been finalized, but I assure you that that's been a big part of the conversation about how we do provide customer amenities. The second piece I would just quickly mention is, another one of our focuses is, of course, the wildlife in the area. Swan Lake has its name for a reason, and as we've all, as we all know, if you've been out there, that how many waterfowl, for instance, use this area? And so we are working with other partners to see what opportunities we can bring to play to enhance the wildlife, the wetlands component. So we have met with Ducks Unlimited, and I think that there's a real opportunity here to bring together those types of pieces as well that, again, add to the quality of life and, and certainly the quality of the, of the wildlife in the area. So certainly know that that's part of our approach.
Great. Well, thank you so much.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Commissioner Lucy, I have you signed in next.
Thank you, Chairman. Mr. Smith, thank you for coming in and providing us an update. I, I do have a couple of questions, and I got, and then a quick statement. Do we still have in place the infrastructure for de-watering off of the northern side of Lemon Drive that would run towards the airport? Do we have that still in place that we were utilizing in conjunction with the City of Reno?
Yeah, through the chair, Commissioner, that pipeline pump system was put in place by the City of Reno to irrigate the American Flat, the Washoe County property that we've been collaborating, be working with the city on. That, that, the plan by the city, as I understand it, is to keep that infrastructure in place, ultimately do something different with it, bury it, you know, so it's not an exposed pipe. But that did demonstrate that we can effectively lower or reduce the amount of time to mitigate future flood issues. So that, that has been shown to be a success.
Right. And then, and I know one of the discussions, as we continue to move along with the lands bill, is there have been discussions about properties north that are BLM-held and also properties to the northeast, which are held by the Reno Sparks Indian Colony, the Hungry Valley Tribe. And there has been discussions about utilizing effluent water from, from Swan Lake and any overage from Swan Lake and from our sewer treatment plants to continue to help them with Class A water out of our plants so that it's not continually, you know, putting burdens and strain on Swan Lake. Have those, have those conversations continued with the tribe?
Those are ongoing conversations. You nailed all those points. We look at, at, I think there's some real opportunities there that we can tie in some of these other export strategies. For instance, those Phase One engineering assessments I mentioned, one of those is, is to, on the Washoe County side, is to put pumps and piping in place to take that water over toward the tribal areas. We don't know what that, how that water might be used, because we don't know the frequency of it, right? As I mentioned before, we could see a lot of water next year. It could be 50 years before we see another lot of water. But we have to plan for these things, and certainly the tribe is a partner in this, in these discussions.
And it's interesting, and I want to dovetail off of what the Vice Chair Hill said, is in conversations that I've had with Ducks Unlimited National out of DC, they have been very interested, and they have a number of grant programs for situations like this, to procure land, not only federally but locally, through different types of land grants and whatnot, and then do preservation and wetland preservation and restoration so that some of these riparian areas can stay as refuge and what, and which is already identified as. A good portion of the south and western sides of that lake are identified as habitat for wetland birds and migratory birds. Ducks Unlimited does these programs quite frequently. I've had conversations with Ducks Unlimited. They want to continue that discussion. I'd like to see our staff to kind of step that up now. We've gotten to a place of, you know, enough mediation of that area, and the water's down. If you're, if it's down to that one-third of where it was in 2017, I think we can start having some more of those conversations with them and truly evaluate those, those opportunities that will sit out there. So I'm happy to, to help continue to facilitate those discussions, but I look forward to that, because as we move forward and find a number of these different strategies, and I, I like where, you know, Commissioner Herman is going as well, is there are opportunities through, south of Silver Lake, towards the airport, along Red Rock, that'll bring, we could put Purple Pipe in and bring, you know, different pump areas into Swan Lake so we can connect those systems, you know? You know, if geographically now, there may be some elevation constraints, but they can be, I believe can be connected. And if we can do those types of things and look into, we should start looking some of those FEMA grants, some discussions through, not only FEMA, but ARPA funds, you know, that we've discussed about infrastructure needs for sewer with the state and different things of that nature, and then obviously these public-private partnerships through programs like Ducks Unlimited and whatnot. So those are my comments. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner. Okay, I'll bring up the rear here. What's the timeline, Mr. Smith, on decommissioning the Lemon Valley Waste Treatment Plant?
We haven't set an exact schedule, Chair. We do have a couple of considerations. First of all, we know that new development is a, is part of this factor, and some of the timing of that development will play into construction of lift, designing construction of lift stations, force mains, those pieces. Another consideration is Washoe County's permit for the facility, for the Lemon Valley facility is due up in about five, four, four years from now. And so I've had communication with the administrator at the state, you know, part of our commitment is to look at how we complete this work before that next permit is in place. So I expect that with the engineering analysis that we've done to date, some of the work that we've done on the financial side, because when I do come back to you, one of your first questions is going to be, you know, the costs and how we're, how we're working through those pieces. So that work is generally been complete as well. I expect that we'll see some significant changes over the next, probably starting in about two years, between the two and the five-year mark.
Okay. So that said, I mean, I think it's, I think that we're ripe for some, some work out there because the lake is low. We, I mean, we can achieve all of these things without having to deal with, you know, a lake that is brimming, as it were. Commissioner Lucy and I worked very hard on getting Lemon Valley Drive realigned and, you know, and elevated, and I'm hopeful, are we still working on the disaster mitigation grants to sort of cordon off the north and the south end, the north end off of Pompey and then the south end off of Patrician?
Those, there's multiple layers to that, but yes, we are working with D E M on some grants in that area and also to the north to look at how we might stop some of the flows coming in to, and when I say some of those flows, I'm talking about the stormwater and the flood flows coming in. Some of that work also is to look at how we help rectify some of those roadside ditch issues. So, you know, this is a challenging environment, highly erosive soils, a lot of tumbleweeds, a lot of those types of things. So any of these future projects, we really need to focus not only on mitigating the water that's coming in, but how we reduce our operations and maintenance costs as well moving forward. So our focus is, is through both of those, those lenses. And yes, we're pursuing grant opportunities with State D E M even as we speak.
So, so should we be looking at things like, instead of having these roadside ditches, should we be looking at things such as, as, you know, actual culvert pipe that does not require maintenance, that is easy to, or doesn't require us to remove weeds and et cetera, that's much easier for us to maintain?
Ultimately, when we come with final projects, those are going to be considerations in any recommendation that we make.
So, and on that, so as you know, Silver Hills, we've required them to retain one and a half times the water coming off their property. They've agreed to that. It's not just a requirement, they've agreed to that, they want to do that. And then they've also asked for all of their effluent back. The, you know, the Lifestyle Homes wants every single drop of their effluent back because they're trying to build an agri-hood up there, which I'm highly supportive of. I think that it's, it's a unique way to solve a lot of these problems. But with the development that's going on out there, I think we have an opportunity to pay for substantial pieces of a regional stormwater utility. As you know, I pushed very hard to have W R W C map the stormwater flows. Our board agreed that, you know, we needed to know the conveyance channels throughout the north valleys in the closed basins, and in fact, we looked everywhere. We wanted to know, it wasn't just the north valleys, it was, it was a regional look that we had T M R P A do, we had Jeremy Smith do it. That has been done, we kind of understand where the conveyance channels are, or where they lie, as it were. Now's the time to work collaboratively to get a stormwater utility, the same as we have in Spanish Springs. I've been paying into that since day one, nine dollars and 31 cents a month currently. And, and, you know, I mean, that's, that's been, I don't know how many years, it's probably at least 20, maybe five, maybe? 23? Somewhere in there?
About 18 years.
Is it 18? Really? After, after 2000? Okay. Seems longer. When you have to pay, it seems longer. Okay, 18 years. That said, it's a, you know, it's a, it, it, does it fix everything? No, but I will tell you, having lived out there for 35 years, the flooding is less today than it was 35 years ago when we first moved in the valley. I mean, it was, it was far worse with no development. It, I mean, you know, it would wash out Pyramid and where Eagle Canyon is, I've said this lots of times in public meetings, Eagle Canyon, there'd be five or six feet of water going across where Eagle Canyon now lies, there was not a road there at the time. It works, and so now, now's the time because we can build these kinds of facilities. It's, you know, it's much easier to build a facility when you're not underwater. So I'm hopeful, I don't, I don't know the exact, I keep hearing the timelines get pushed back because of design issues on Lemon Valley Drive, but I think that's the first piece for us, is getting Lemon Valley Drive elevated and realigned, understanding what role it could potentially play. I totally agree with, with Commissioner Lucy, the tribal option, I've, I've had conversations with the tribe, they're, they want to continue these talks with, with how they can potentially get some of that water, the same as we're doing right now in, in other places with Stem Wharf and, and, you know, using that water in places where potable water could, would, would potentially be used. I think that the, it's a multi-pronged solution, and, and so I'm hopeful that, that we can really start moving on this. But what I think, and I don't know if, if we need to give formal direction, Madam Attorney, we can't today, but maybe we can bring back an item that asks you to pursue what a stormwater utility in the north valleys would look like and how we might be able to fund it, especially with some of the new growth.
I appreciate that very much, Chair and Commission, and we're happy to work as staff and come back with some framework and some timeframes to look at how we can move forward to some of these very necessary pieces.
And I, and I don't, I don't think we can require them to do offsite improvements of this nature, but I think that they would be willing to do offsite improvements. So that's, those are just my thoughts. Madam Vice Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I, one point that I didn't recognize is the hard work that you, Mr. Chairman, and Commissioner Lucy really put into ensuring that Lemon Valley would get, would respond, this project through R T C would respond to the flooding, and thank you so much for your advocacy on that. I just think that's going to make a whole lot of difference with the community, and I really appreciate your work on that board.
I appreciate that. And to that point, that's why I think we really need to try to seek those disaster mitigation grants now and get those, those berms up now at the north and the south end, do that prior to even, even Lemon Valley Drive, and then if we have to put HESCO barriers up in the event that, that we have an emergency, at least we've protected those, you know, that north and that south side. So, I mean, those are, again, just my thoughts. Commissioner Lucy, I have you signed in again.
Thank you, Chairman. And Mr. Smith, one, you know, one thing I wanted to bring up too as well, one of the, one of the big issues that are coming out of the ARPA funding is the access to broadband and the access to that type of infrastructure, and to bring that type of infrastructure in, they're not obviously going to just go and cut line for fiber. They are looking to cut line alongside of other utilities, whether that's power, whether that's stormwater drains, whatever. So those are different discussions as well, and I know the tribal community are, are going to be first in line to get a lot of that infrastructure, i.e. Hungry Valley, and some of those ways of getting that infrastructure to Hungry Valley or our different parts of Nixon. And so when those discussions are being had, I'd like for our staff to reach out and have those discussions with the federal individuals and with N dot and the F C C in regards to where they are with those programs and how, you know, what they, what the thoughts are going forward, because that's a significant amount of funding that's coming out of that for that type of infrastructure. And to have that kind of alignment with them just makes sense. Appreciate it. Thank you, Chairman.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. Anyone else? Okay, thank you, Mr. Smith.
Thank you.
I appreciate the comprehensive update and look forward to the next one. Let's, let's see if we can get some of these things in place and get them moving.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, Mr. Manager, that takes us on to item number six.
Item six, public comment. Comment heard under this item will be limited to three minutes per person and may pertain to matters both on and off the commission agenda. The commission will also hear public comment during individual action items with comment limited to three minutes per person. Comments are to be made to the commission as a whole.
Okay, thank you. Madam Clerk, would you call public comment, please?
Yes. First up, we have Janet Butcher, followed by Elise Weatherly.
Good morning, Janet Butcher. For the record, please ensure my comments are entered into the public record per N R S 241 dot oh three five. I would like to reiterate the request and the hope that the voter integrity resolution presented to the board on February 8th, 2022, has been placed on the February 22nd, 2022 agenda. From my genealogy, I am able to locate the manifest from the King of Prussia vessel entering port of, in Philadelphia, Pennsylvania, from London for my great, 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 great grandfather. In 1764, they kept better records of immigrants coming into the colonies than we do into the states now with all the advances in our technology. This is a rhetorical question, why? And that's what I, that's basically what I have to say about the integrity of our elections. And then I just kind of want to make a comment about, it's kind of nice to listen to all of the presentations and what have you, and all of a sudden it brought to mind, a few years ago, when my husband and I retired from working, we bought ourselves a really nice car. Now, we're not going to drive the roads very much because we're retired, except for now, we come in the commissioners meeting all the time. We had to pay really high registration fees on this car. Well, we're not on the road, we're not using the road. I, I don't get the equity in that. And then I wanted to make a comment about the lovely ladies, they left, but I did get to speak to them, from the Awaken Group. One of the things, if our government really cared about trafficking, they would stop the flow of drugs and people into our southern border. We attended a human trafficking rally in Carson City last year sometime, and we actually had people come by and give us the finger for rallying against human trafficking. So anyway, that's about all I have today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Elise Weatherly, followed by Erin Massengale.
Ms. Weatherly, welcome. It's nice to see you in person again.
Hello, hello. Nice to see you. Elise Weatherly, I have to rush through it because I don't have unlimited time like your presenters do. I have three minutes, and it's really hard for me to get done what I would like to say in three minutes because it's impossible. Okay, so what I will say is, you can see that I'm wearing my booze shirt, I call it my booze shirt. I wrote booze on the shirt of the band that I used to be in. Part of this thing has to do with volunteer work versus, you know, getting paid to do what you want, what you need to do. So the people that were paid to be here don't have to stick around and listen to the likes of me. Understandable. It's about money, it's about cost, right? So I have been looking at commercials recently going, well, how much would it cost me to save the world? Cost me $12 to save the whales, it would cost me $19 to save the polar bears, it'll cost me $19 to save all the children that are sick, another $19 to feed the whole children. I go, well, my gosh, I have been giving money and time and talent for decades, how come we're not in better shape? Okay, it's not going to the right place. It's not. By the way, Ms. Butcher, if you're still here, my daughter would probably would have been one of the ones that would flip her off for trying to stop human trafficking because, you know what, there's, there's money involved. People are getting money to do stuff like this, so we're going to give money to stop them, but it's not going to stop them, it's going to continue. So I can't stay here longer with that, I wish that I could, given, haven't been given false hope and false information. But I will say that any time, I would not fit into this board. I would drive you guys nuts and you would drive me away. Volunteer work, free, you know, stuff in the churches, I'd say no. I object because I have tried it for decades, and guess what? It doesn't work. By the way, I checked the reference manual for mental illness, it's not listed in there. Casting out demons is, but we can't talk about that. And so I'm thinking, well, what do I do with this whole Washoe County situation? I have been here so many times and not a word is heard. Well, I'll do the other instruction. I'll shake the dust off of my feet, all right? Eventually, I'm just going to shake, shake the dust off of my feet, but while I'm in Costco and places like that, I see women with children, men with children, I go, are you gearing up to be a politician? Because we need some with some common sense. Can we please do away with a 501(c)(3)? Yes, I know all about these, you know, tax things, I've worked in that kind of situation for a long time. 501(c)(3) is a tax write-off for people who give to these organizations so they don't have to pay so much in taxes? Nah, I wouldn't do it. I wanted to talk to you about HOAs and my security camera and problems that I'm having with people that snip my hoses, and the Washoe County Sheriff just doesn't have time to look into it, but I've run out of time. Now I have to go take care of the real deal. Bye, guys.
Thank you.
Erin Massengale, followed by Melanie Sutton.
Good morning. I wanted to voice my support for the resolution regarding election integrity that hopefully you guys will place on the agenda next week. I'm also here to acknowledge that the mask mandate has been dropped. However, the governor did not end the state of emergency, which leaves our elected officials vulnerable to taking the heat when he does decide to mandate other things, whether they be vaccine passports or mask mandates. Again, what I would like is to encourage you to pass a resolution to ban the vaccine verification system, whether we're discussing businesses and patrons or whether we're discussing just businesses. Employees should not need to verify any sort of medical status in order to obtain employment. It is a violation of human rights and it is a violation of medical privacy. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Melanie Sutton, followed by Donald Fossom.
Good morning. I also would like to show my support for the resolution, and hopefully you guys can put that on the agenda for the 22nd. We need voter ID, paper ballots, and then also, actually, what's all that equity and inclusion stuff in the lobby? It's kind of weird. I thought we'd been past all this.
Thank you.
David Fossom.
Welcome.
I came all the way over here from somewhere else to express my profound appreciation for your consideration. Yes, in- for your consideration, your sincerity in consideration of the election integrity proposal, verified by what we saw at the end with Mr. Hartong handing things over saying, we have to check on this, we have to check on this, we have to check on this. That made it real real, and we appreciate all of your feedback you gave that day. And here is your measure of how important this election integrity is to the committee. Nobody's here. Almost nobody. Sorry, Melanie and Janet, I can name them all. So anyway, I just wanted to express that, and I'm very hopeful that you will join the community in us correcting what needs to be corrected in election integrity. And one of the biggest thing is the paper ballots, being able to count them, elimination of machines, and making sure that everybody that signed up to be a poll worker becomes one, and you express following through on that, which I'm appreciative of. There's another big issue which I'm reminded of because Lombardi has come into town for a debate with another candidate, and I have a sign ready for him that says, say no to sanctuary cities. Say no to Lombardo. So I'm hoping that you can also look into that one, and I appreciate you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
There's no one else signed in.
Okay. I will close public comment and bring it back to the board. Mr. Manager, that takes us now to item number seven.
Item seven is commissioners and county managers announcements, reports, and updates to include boards and commissions, updates, requests for information, or topics for future agendas.
Do you have any such items, Mr. Manager?
I do not, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Mr. Hill, I have you signed in first.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to give an update to the board on what Tahoe Transportation District and TRPA are doing for regional revenue at Lake Tahoe for public transportation improvements as well as different roadway improvements. We're looking at the quarter of 28 in North Shore and also Emerald Bay as possible zones that we can look to have a user fee on. So I will keep the board posted on what that looks like. For 28, it will be mainly parking, which will be, fees will be imposed upon. So that, that's a future development and, and something that I will keep the board posted on to ensure that folks can get to Lake Tahoe on, on buses as well as, you know, if they do choose to drive their cars, that we incentivize different ways and modes of transportation. So that's coming up.
Okay. Thank you so much. Commissioner Lucy, I have you signed in next.
Thank you, Chairman. I do appreciate it. Couple of updates I want to bring forward for the board and for all of those here in the chambers today. We did launch our digital platform last night, or yesterday, I should say, with Ledger 8760. And I want to just kind of, I want to, first of all, thank this board for continuing to, to support these initiatives and efforts. You know, this, I believe that sometimes when we do things of this nature, it gets, there's a lot of misinformation out there. But Ledger 8760 is a wonderful group that we partner with here at the county that really tracks our carbon footprint, our platform, and measures our energy, our emissions, and utility information. And we launched the public-facing platform that tracks the carbon emissions from the county standpoint and our county-owned buildings and vehicles. Now, you can look at this from two standpoints in the sense that, one is obviously that of where we can look at it for a environmental, smart, forward-facing ideology and make sure that what we're doing is the right thing for our community and for our environment going forward. And I think that's absolutely what we need to continue to do is work on improving our air quality and our environment in our community so that it doesn't have long-term impacts on our, our mountains, our snow, our water, things that are impactful to our community. Being that I've lived here for 40 years of my life, or my entire life for that matter, you know, we've had, we've seen a dramatic decrease in snowpack and different things in our, in our community. Now, is that directly related? I can't say that. I'm not, I'm not that type of environmentalist and I don't study that. But I do have noticed changes in our community and in our environment. The other thing that you can look at it from, though, is that it allows us to take a real efficient understanding of our, our energy use and how we are wasting our energy and how we are spending it wisely. And what that really relates to is the dollars and cents, the fiscal responsibility of the county and what we really are doing with the tax dollar and make sure that we aren't wasting time and energy on inefficiencies within our community. So I'm very excited about this, looking forward to it. You can read about the initiative on washoecounty.gov/resilience. There's a portal there. You can see all of the information and how we're, what we're doing to kind of reduce carbon emissions here at the county. So very excited about the program we launched last year, and I'm glad that we've, this board has supported it and staff got on board, and it's now come to fruition. And we're going to see that really try, hopefully pay off for us in the years to come. Secondarily, wanted to bring up discussions about STRs. We briefly had a discussion about that last meeting of the RSCVA, and I want to see if we can continue. I met with the CEO and the other staff that oversees the tax collection for STRs at the RSCVA, and they are looking to get, sit down with the manager and the assistant manager and Moira and kind of see how we can work together to mitigate any of those challenges we're seeing with STRs, but possibly also look at finding, funding from the RSCVA to help offset costs for the STR program. So that was a good discussion at the board level, and hopefully that comes to fruition. RSCVA is going to have a strategic planning session upcoming, March 7th, or March 5th, I should say, Friday, March 5th. I think that's the right date. And we will be going over a number of different things as it pertains to the community and tourism, but not just tourism as from marketing and operations standpoint, but really talking about transportation within the community, how we get visitors to and from the events and the venues, airport, whatnot, and then getting individuals to the area from outside of our community, whether that's from Las Vegas, driver communities, different things like that. So good things to participate. We had, we did have consultants from Ontario, Canada, that have done a number of different types of planning and assessments across the country. So I'm looking forward to that session coming up. And other than that, one, some wonderful things, obviously Olympics. We had, you know, our, a number of our locals from California and Nevada participate in the Olympics, and, and we also had UNR, one of our UNR players play on Los Angeles Rams, Mr. Corbett, played defensive line and did a phenomenal job to bring home a Los Angeles Rams victory. Now, that wasn't a Raiders victory or a Niners victory, but we'll take what we can get. So we're just happy to see that those individuals participated and have some locals participate in some major events over the last week. So thank you, Mr. Chairman. That's all I have to offer today.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Herman, I have you signed in next.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to make a plea for people that are in the North Valleys cab area to show up at the cab meeting tonight at 6:00 in the library at, in the, by Rayleigh's. That's all I have.
Okay. Thank you. I want to draw attention to, yesterday was National Donor Day, a, a subject that's very near and dear to my wife's kidney, my daughter's kidney. So thank you for everyone. If you have not signed up to be a donor, please, it's, it's so important. It's just so, so very important. I, I know, I know there are many people out there who, who feel that there would be an issue with that, that, that there could possibly, you know, be a, a scenario where they decide to, you know, take organs prior to, to someone's passing, but that's truly not the case. I mean, it's a, it's just such a, such a needed program. We have National Donor Month coming up, and, and I would like to, when we do that, I'd like to actually highlight, if it's possible, Mr. Manager, I'd like to get someone to come in who serves on our Board of Health, who is Dr. John Clacking, who has a business that is working on actually using stem cell, they're, they're doing research on stem cell use to grow organs. And it's just such a, it's, it's an amazing, it's just an amazing thing that we have that right here in our own community. It's being funded in our own community. And then the final thing, I'm not going to make any secret of this. I did an FOIA request for, to NDOT, asking for crash data on the Pyramid Highway and on the Mount Rose Highway. Commissioner Lucy and I worked on this collaboratively. I want to see the data that they're using that pertains to the elimination of the advanced signal warning systems. They have not provided us with, with any solid data that pertains to our region. I, I mentioned this earlier to our NDOT representative, that I'm very frustrated. I'm frustrated for Northern Nevada. We have so many roads that have not been attended to in terms of capacity. I'll just use the example of Pyramid Highway. There has been no capacity improvements, true capacity improvements that, that have made a substantive difference that NDOT has done in 30 years. And so I'm, I'm frustrated with that. We have huge need out north through, from, from where the, the road wise from Egyptian and Sunset Springs to the very end of the valley, and then, of course, all the way to Pyramid Lake. There's been no capacity improvements whatsoever. So I'm, I, I'm hopeful that they will address that. We had another accident there the other day at, at Cuyahoga La Plata and Pyramid, which, by the way, does not have the advanced signal warning system. So, you know, they, they can't say, oh, well, if we hadn't had that. And then there was another issue where the intersection of Cuyahoga La Plata and Pyramid, they had a diesel, a tractor trailer that, that went up on the curb because the radius is so tight for that right-hand turn, southbound right-hand turn movement, that many of those tractor trailers can't negotiate that turn. And so I'm, I'm looking forward to this information from NDOT, and we're, we're going to, we're going to ask them, you know, to, to really step up their game in Northern Nevada. I mean, it's just time. We have so many roads that are, that have capacity needs. And that's all I have. Did I shake anything loose? Okay. All right. I will close the commissioner and county manager's announcements, and, Mr. Manager, that takes us to item number eight, donations.
Would you like me to read the donations, Mr. Chair?
Just open, open the item, if you would.
Item number eight is donations.
Okay. Thank you. That's typically how we do it. Commissioner Hill, Vice Chair Hill, would you, would you tell us about the donations today?
Absolutely. Today, we are looking to accept donations of $2,262.19 from various businesses, organizations, and individuals for our regional parks and open space programs and facilities. We're also looking to accept a donation from Grace Community Church of Reno, a nonprofit religious organization, to Washoe County Human Services Agency in the amount of $701,576.09 in support of exterior and interior property improvements, including furniture, fixtures, equipment of the new river house at 480 Glady Way in Sparks and building 14 and 15 on the Our Place campus. And they have been incredibly generous to us throughout the years, and so this is just yet another show of support for the work that we're doing at Our Place, and we really appreciate that. Also, accepting various winter clothing items such as gloves, scarves, hats, socks, and holiday trees donated to the Nevada Cares Campus from various donors, totaling an estimated market value of $3,000. And I know we're going to look to build this program in the future. And also, I accepted a donation from Jekyll &amp; Ross's for 99 cases of purified water bottles and an estimated $1,385.01. We're also going to do, or going to accept a donation from the Washoe County Regional Animal Services in the amount of $11,409.66 retroactive between October 1, 2021 and December 31st, 2021, from numerous donors for humane care and treatment of sick or injured stray, abandoned, or at-risk animals received, express, and of course, expressing appreciation for these thoughtful contributions, and a donation of $300 from Fire Shows West to the Washoe County Sheriff's Office for the Citizen Core Program, CCP, and they, they will be used for food purchases and operating supplies. And we are so appreciative for the community's donations of all of our programs. And that is made in a motion, Mr. Chairman.
We have more.
We have more.
Did you, did, did I, did I miss? Is that it? Would you get them? Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. I'm sorry. I was looking at the first page and seeing the $300.
So Chairman, I will second the Vice Chair's motion.
We have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, do we have any public comment on this item? Okay. I'll bring it back to the board. We have a motion and a second. Seeing no other discussion, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries, I believe unanimously. Please affirm your votes. Okay. I apologize. I was looking at the, the other page. That takes us now to item number nine, consent. Commissioners, do we have?
Chairman, if I may.
Yes.
You know, I'd like to point out, I have no concerns, obviously, with the consent agenda with three items that are in our consent agenda today, but I would like to point out that today in our consent agenda, we, in item 9b1, Vice Chair Hill is going to be donating, she is going to be making a distribution out of her special funds in the amount of $3,900 to the Homeless Services Continuum Care Administration, which is a government entity that supports and providing unsheltered individuals who participate in the PIT count. And the PIT count is very important for us in regards to collecting that data and really identifying not only who is within our community that is experiencing homelessness, but those individuals that really identifies funding for us from the federal government. So it is a very, very important process that we need to do for not only the human services side of things, but also for Department of Human Services in DC. So with that, I want to thank Commissioner Hill and her continued dedication to our homeless community. Thank you, Chairman.
You're, you're welcome. And that was the other donation. It was weird. It was split.
Did you just get, did you just go throwing up there? Gotcha.
I suddenly realized it was from Commissioner Hill. I apologize. Okay. So, so on the consent agenda, we have, is there, is there anyone that needs any other information? Okay. No amendations on the minutes. Okay. So Commissioner Lucy, was that a motion for the entire consent agenda?
I will make that in the form of a motion, sir, that we accept a consent agenda as posted.
Okay. Have a motion. Do I have a second? Okay. Have a motion by Commissioner Lucy, or Commissioner Lucy, second by Commissioner Herman. Madam Clerk, do we have any public comment at this time?
We do not.
Okay. I will close public comment, bring it back to the board. We have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Manager, would you take us into item number 10, our final public comment?
Item 10 is public comment. Comment heard under this item will be limited to three minutes per person and may pertain to matters both on and off the commission agenda. The commission will also hear public comment during individual action items with comment limited to three minutes per person. Comments are to be made to the commission as a whole.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Manager. Madam Clerk, do we have anyone signed in for public comment?
We have nobody signed in.
Okay. I will close public comment and bring it back to the board. Mr. Manager, that takes us to our final commissioners and county managers announcements. Would you agree to that?
Item 11 is commissioners and county managers announcements, reports, and updates to include boards and commissions, updates, requests for information, or topics for future agendas.
Okay. Mr. Manager, do you have anything?
I do not, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Commissioners, anything from anyone else? I did want to just make a, one clarification on the item and the FO, the Freedom of Information Act that I asked for, from NDOT. It's crash and LiDAR information because they did LiDAR studies, which they have, they said that people are speeding up for those, those advanced signal warning systems. And my, my ultimate question is going to be, have they done that same exact study And my, my ultimate question is going to be, have they done that same exact study on intersections without advanced signal warning systems where people speed up to go through yellow lights as well, which are potentially just as hazardous and just as dangerous? So, I wanted to make sure that, that everybody knew that those were the questions that both Commissioner Lucy and I were, were asking. If there is nothing from anyone else, I will take us into adjournment.
No.
Oh.
We're not doing a block?
Don't have a block.
No block?
That's everything.
Nothing?
That's it.
That's it.
Nope, that's it. Okay.
Okay.
We are adjourned.
Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you so much, everyone.